Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight, we're in committees. We have an important presentation, a report that's coming to us tonight. And what I will suggest is that the Transportation Committee, since this is such a wide-ranging discussion, that for the Transportation Committee at least, that all members of council stay up at the dais. And after we have the presentation, any council comments or administrative comments, I know that there may be some members in the audience who also want to make comments. And that's fine for you to do. We have a three-minute limit on that. So I'll turn it over to the Chair of Transportation, Council Member Jeff Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. As you mentioned, the way the committee will operate is we'll hear your presentation. And then, since this is a working council session, then council will then be available to ask questions and make comments and so on. And then, when all that's finished, we'll move to elected officials who may wish to chime in. And then, we'll move to the audience who may wish to speak on this. I don't know if the President wants to add the emails that we've been getting about this to the record or...
We can attach those. We have received an email and an addendum to that from a citizen and from Heather Cantino. And so, we can, we will attach that as well.
Okay. Well, with that, I'll turn it over to the committee. Go for it.
Thank you. Hello. My name is Diane Bouvier, and I chair the Ad Hoc Pedestrian Accessibility Committee. What began as a resolution by former city council member Ariane Smedley to address the inaccessible state of our sidewalks became a year-long journey for this city and for this committee. When we talked to people during the year and told them about this project, we often heard stories about people falling, breaking an arm, shoulder, twisting an ankle. So it's not just accessibility, it's also safety. And when we did the survey, people not only spoke loudly and clearly about wanting better accessibility and safety, but also about wanting a better way of life, one that included using sidewalks to reach more destinations like stores, the library, public transit, restaurants, or the bike path. They wanted shade trees and benches, signage, and more services closer to where they lived. Tonight, we do our final presentation, highlighting recommendations that came from this community. We know these will cost money, and we believe the Athens community is ready to support having better sidewalks. So let's begin with Stephanie.
Athens is a unique place. Thirty-four point nine percent of Athenians walk their commute, the third highest rate of any city of any size in the entire country. And this is remarkable, not least of all because out of the 38 miles of sidewalks in this city, nine are out of compliance with the ADA. Of 886 corners, 373 have problems ranging from missing a detectable warning grid to not having a ramp at all. And that doesn't even touch the 37 miles of sidewalks we need to build to give every street in Athens a sidewalk on at least one side. Given that Athens is out of federal compliance and therefore risking not qualifying for future federal funding, it might seem pretty ambitious that this committee is recommending going above and beyond federal ADA standards. But the ADA is the bare minimum required by law. Here's an ADA compliance crosswalk. And this is how you navigate it, in a wheelchair, or with a stroller, or using a walker. You have to kind of go down the ramp into traffic and then veer back to the paint, and then back out into traffic and up the ramp again. It's not great, is it? And here's the other direction where there isn't even paint. It's not very safe, or comfortable, or even logical. And we could build these crosswalks on every corner and be in compliance. Or we can go above and beyond to make places that are safe, intuitive, comfortable, and beautiful. Make high-quality places. Why give ourselves the bare bones when we can do better? Athens has all the ingredients to be a pedestrian paradise and every reason to embrace it. Our cute walkable downtown is a large part of why parents feel comfortable dropping their kids off at university here. Imagine if we not just allowed, but encouraged pedestrianism beyond Court Street. Add in the economic, physical, mental, social, and environmental benefits, we know increased walking brains. And then, add one more fact. Sidewalks last a lot longer than roads, anywhere from 25 up to 80 years. Anything we build today will still be in good repair when my small children are pushing strollers of their own. So let's choose to live up to our progressive ideals and build our town so that everyone, of all abilities and ages, can thrive here. Because whatever we build, we'll be living with it for a long time. So let's do it, and let's do it right. Here's Rob.
So one of the big, I think, deliverables of this project, this committee, and this report, is the recommendations. I'm going to talk a little bit about those, but there's 50 recommendations. That's a lot, and there's a lot of information in there in addition to the recommendations. But we tried to organize the recommendations by categories. As you see here on the screen, this is how they're organized in the report as it stands now in the draft you've seen. Like I said, there's about 50, or exactly, I think it is 50 recommendations in the report right now. About a third of those are in the last category, the recommendations for the city, or city staff or administration really is the focus there. And almost another third under the category of establish and communicate standards. So those are really sort of the two heavy categories here that have a lot of recommendations. So as far as some of the key recommendations, I'll talk about just a handful. Like I said, there's 50. There's way too much to go into detail here today in this presentation. But the recommendations are based on best practices, what the community came up when we were researching these topics, and also what we heard from the community. So you've heard a little bit about the survey. We had 784 responses to the survey, plus we had focus sessions and other things going on. We got a lot of community input, and that really helped us build this report. So that's really a key piece of the information we used. So the first item on this list, though, is implementing a list of prioritized sidewalk and accessibility projects that we've included in the report. So that's one recommendation. There's 37 items. There's a lot of information here. The top item in this sidewalk project list is the intersection you see on the left here, which are all probably familiar with, Union and Court Street, where there's the scramble crossing, or the Barnes Dance, if you want to use that term for it. But it's not exactly very accessible as it stands currently. And I'm going to play a video here that one of our audience members, Carolyn Lewis, is in.
Are probably the centerpieces of Athens and the campus. However, it is terribly dangerous crossing these streets. The curb cuts are not really cuts. When you go up, you have to really pay attention to whether you're going to go backwards or forwards when you get there. And if you get to a curb cut that's not accurate or appropriate, you can find yourself going backwards in a chair. Also, many of the streets are not even. And as you can see here at the college bookstore, the street actually makes me go sideways. And I feel like I want to fall over. Going to the center of the street, there are too many holes, and you have to really avoid going to the center. And by the time I get to the middle of the street, it's already zero. So I could be dead. This is the number-one priority for the city to take care of because it's very dangerous, it's not safe, and again, it's the centerpiece of the town and the university. Though this is the priority, this is just the start.
All right. So thank you to Dr. Lewis for putting that video together and the support she had to do that as well. I'm going to go back to the slide deck here. So that intersection, we're all familiar with it, right? It's pedestrian-friendly, right? I think of it as being that. It's designed more for pedestrians than probably any intersection in town, but it's still not very accessible. Now, to the city's credit, the city engineers know this is an issue, and they have plans to already try and work on this intersection, improve the accessibility of this intersection. So this is a top recommendation, but we already know that the city already has this high on their list. So they have intentions to update this intersection to make it more accessible. So to go down the list a little bit here, looking at the second item, create a sidewalk program, and there's some sub-recommendations on this. This is really one of the cruxes of our report, is where other cities have tried to improve their sidewalk condition. They've had the same problems, same challenges we face here at Athens. It's not a new problem. But many cities, even in Ohio, have tried to fix this problem and tried to address it. And one of the things they've done usually is created a sidewalk program. So formalize a program to help fix our sidewalks, and that can be multifaceted. A couple of the items on here include enhancing the sidewalk condition assessment. So the engineers have done assessments, the planning office has done assessments previous to that. We would suggest that those should be updated for a complete inventory of the city's pedestrian infrastructure, and that the standards should be set up so that it's clear when they do these assessments whether or not a particular piece of infrastructure is accessible or not. To make that really clear. Right now, it's not so clear in the results that they have in their assessment. Adopting and communicating sidewalk standards. So in the past, there's been arguments about whether or not a particular piece of sidewalk needs to be replaced. In 2015, when the city did a sidewalk project on three streets in the city, it became a point of contention that the engineer said this needs to be replaced, and somebody could easily argue, "Well, I don't think it does." There's no standards. The city has adopted to say exactly what it means to be accessible, or for that sidewalk to be in good usable condition. And we recommend that the city establish those standards. So there's no argument anymore. It is or it is not something needs to be replaced or fixed. Establishing sidewalk funding sources, there's a number of recommendations about this and options we investigated. So that's also an important facet of this. Like Diane said, it's going to cost money. How the city can pay for this is a tough question. We have some ideas about that, but we don't have any real solutions. And I think that's where the real discussion about this will go down, down the road. Work with neighborhoods developed in your plan to engage with the communities on this, adopt what is a multimodal design guide from ODOT. So they finally got on board with this just this summer and published a multimodal design guide for pedestrian infrastructure. And it's really well-done. So I would say, to my opinion, surprisingly well-done for ODOT. And I think it's something that the city should look at, make sure it's what they agree. But if they're adopting it, then it's going to help them get funding for their projects through grants for ODOT. And then, the last item on this list is create a permanent pedestrian accessibility and bicycle committee. So there was something like this in 2010 that came up with the Bicycle Pedestrian Plan that has been sort of the guiding document for the city to improve its pedestrian and bicycling infrastructure. And we suggest that that needs to be brought back, and really, the work of this committee could be continued through creating a permanent committee that would be able to help implement and help work through the future when it comes to pedestrian and bicycling infrastructure in the city. And lastly, I'm not going to really cover this much detail, but we did make a graph, chart here to try and organize some of the recommendations. This is just over half of them. In a format that you could easily try and consume and say the upper-left here, short-range, high-impact are best bang for your buck. So you can do them quickly, you can get them done cheap. And so, this can help focus the attention where you can get things done quickly, make some, make some, some good, gain some good ground on trying to improve our pedestrian accessibility in the city. We haven't included this in the report yet, but we plan to add this for the final draft in some form. And next up is Solvee.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about money. Just the fun part. Not really. Okay, so Athens is fortunate to have a talented team of city staff that has obtained millions of dollars in grant funding to improve our infrastructure. Even though matching dollars are required for grants, they provide the majority of funds for streets and sidewalks. For example, the Stimson Avenue Project, as you're aware of, and the upcoming West Union and West Washington Street Project. So a lot of exciting things have happened and are in the works. Note that ARPA funds are not accessible for this purpose, but may be in the future. So the current process, as many of you are aware, but unfortunately, a lot of people don't know, is that the Ohio Revised Code, our city codes, expect property owners to repair their own sidewalks. Unfortunately, in Athens and across the nation, such policies have failed. We are not meeting our legal and moral obligations to provide people with disabilities, and for the rest of us, with safe and passable walkways because of the systems we had. And if you'll just take a second to read the quote there, we'd really appreciate it. This is from the U.S. ODOT Guide for Maintaining Pedestrian Facilities. Note that the two common reasons cited by municipalities for not addressing sidewalk maintenance through special assessments are the amount of time it takes to do so and political So the Federal Highway Administration says cities should give, get creative with their fundraising, or funding, excuse me, not fundraising. So we've identified some funding models for discussion. And the first one is the Sidewalk Replacement City Resident Cost Sharing Program. And so, in some places, it's a blended funding model, in which the city offers a 50/50 shared cost for property owners. The city then creates a program in which property owners coordinate their own sidewalk repairs. Of course, this would be overseen by code enforcement and making sure that the quality standards are met. And then, once it's done, they can apply for 50% to be paid by the city. The issue's there. Some city staff believe this option would be too complicated, and special programs would need to be created to assist low-income homeowners who cannot pay, as they have in Columbus, with a special city program for that purpose. Number two, Annual Sidewalk Assessment Cost Sharing Program, the Sidewalk Subscription. The city would divide itself into four sidewalk improvement districts based on current wards. Then, each ward would coordinate sidewalk and pathway repair, allowing for complete street rehab using Athens city standards and a continuous corner ramp to corner ramp continuous ribbon. The funding model considers frontage, foot traffic, and property ownership. City staff did not specifically comment on this model, and in this model, there would be a flat fee for low-traffic areas. Again, this is very, there's so much more to this, obviously. Another option that was raised was inside Millage, and it's very clear from talking to Jill Thompson, the county auditor, that this is not an option at this time. Another one is county-wide sales tax, which has been used in some areas. But again, this is one that we believe would not be accepted because county residents don't particularly want to pay for city sidewalks, unfortunately, but perhaps someday in the future, that might be an option. Okay, another one is a tax levy, and of course, the administration is concerned about raising taxes for this one issue, for one issue. However, we believe that the commitment to sidewalk repairs may be there based on the response to our outreach and the nearly, well, actually, over 800 people who have been engaged in this process. So we have to come up with some good ideas, and there's much more room for discussion there, which will be part of the implementation process. Okay, Athens Street Fund. Currently, there's over $3 million in that, but you know, we know that streets are expensive. So this is an issue in that Athens has a street fund that's used for curbs, to replace adjacent sidewalks if streets are torn up, and occasionally to pave new sidewalks. Similar to funding prioritized street projects, Athens needs to create a process for funding ongoing sidewalk projects and have an account item specifically for sidewalks. Currently, it's one item, and there's some work being done that is not separated out. So many cities have shifted to a model where the city administration manages citywide sidewalk remediation, new construction, and even snow removal. So, and this is a quote from the U.S. Department of Federal Highway Administration, that really says, "Many communities have shifted responsibly of sidewalk maintenance away from property owners in order to address a backlog of sidewalk maintenance, which we have clearly shown that we have." So it's certainly not a new concept with us. The bottom line. Okay. Grants cover the majority of street projects, and the federal and state government has said that cities have to have an ADA transition plan, which is being worked on right now, I know. Or if we're not making progress on a plan and then implementing that plan, we will not qualify for grants to improve streets or sidewalks in the future. Therefore, our position is we really need to do something, come up with a solution to get our sidewalks up to code. And then, I will finish back to Diane.
Thank you. XLV.
So we sort of inverted it. Usually, we talk about the process at the beginning, but we thought we'd save it for the end. We've been here, this is our fourth time coming, our fourth, actually, not fourth time coming, third time coming, fourth time giving some information about the sidewalk that we've been doing. But we've, it's been a very extensive process. We've looked at GIS data, collected data, as you've seen in the report that was sent to you. If you looked at any of the images that quantify the sidewalks, the curb ramps, the places that are accessible and not accessible. We reviewed city practices, and we've talked with city staff to try to get an understanding of what our current processes are, and here, what it is that people are working with and concerned about. We've looked at state, city, and federal codes and law. We adopted SPACE, which was our model that we used with our survey, and it stands for safety, proximity, accessibility, connection, and ease. And we believe all pedestrians are looking for more space. And it gave everyone a common language and a framework to think about sidewalks. We conducted the survey, and we had 784 responses. 783 of them were really interested in us improving sidewalks. One said, "This is a really biased survey, not, not, it's not, it's not anything to do for vehicle, for drivers." And we're like, "Yes, that's true. It was not." But there were so many comments saying sidewalks, we really want to have better sidewalks. And the focus groups were really telling of what was important. I thought, for the focus groups, the thing that stood out to me when I was doing them was, for all the comments that I heard when I did the disability group about just wanting, I mean, "I just want to get there" was like the phrase. And it wasn't about, "I want shade trees, and I want benches, and I want to look at artwork, and I want..." It was nothing to do with the environment. It was, "I just want to get there." And when you realize some people can't get there, then you know we need to do something about it. And that's the minimum. We researched funding options, and then we drafted the plan. So the message is clear. If you haven't, sort of, you're gathering this, I'm sure. Athens walkers and rollers want space. Sidewalks are a public good. So it has this interesting combination of individual property owner responsibility, but also the city has a responsibility to make sure our sidewalks as a continuum meet the ADA. So they have the enforcement ability, but not necessarily the time or the will to make that happen, because it is very timely, I mean, time-intensive to use our code enforcement process to fix sidewalks. But it is a public good, which means that it's something as a public we all use. Our current processes and funding are not enough, and we need something that will provide long-range funding. This isn't a two-year project and then we're done. This is a long-term project. So what we need is a commitment, sorry, a commitment from both the city leadership, city council, and the community to make this happen. And it's time. We want our sidewalks to be accessible. It's a moral imperative that we build the future that we would like to have, and do more than just the minimum. So I wanted to thank the city council for taking this up and appointing a committee, and for the, all of the work that people have done and the city staff have done. And you were, you received copies of our report, and we're hoping if you have comments, that you'll just make them in that Google Drive draft by February 1st. The Voinivich School, some experts at the Voinivich School have agreed to help with final editing and formatting. We're hoping we'll get everything finished by March. So you have a draft version, in essence. But this is just the first step. There really is a long way to go. It's not like this is done when the report is done. It's really important that it keep going. And so, we also want to thank all of our survey respondents. We heard you. We listened, we read what you wrote. We, we want to make sure that your voices continue. And I personally want to thank the committee. It was an amazing group of people to work with, and we all had different skills, talents, approaches, thoughts, and how we wanted to do this. But I think as a group, we really came together. So Steve Patterson, Mayor of Athens, I'd like to thank you for your participation, and Rob Delak, Neil Ryan, who's our student representative, Solvee Spaldness, and Stephanie Hunter. But they really did an amazing job. So I'm so proud of us as a group. So that's it. Any comments or questions or thoughts? And Mayor Patterson, did you have anything?
No, that, excuse me. That comes back to me now.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know the rules.
I don't either. I just make them up. But I'm in charge, so I can do that.
Okay, you're in charge. Tell me, tell me, what would you like to know?
Okay. To the committee, would members of our council care to ask questions or make comments? Members, why?
Couple. One, for those who don't have this document, it's 178 pages. So if you're nearing the completion of your current book, this would be a good next one to pick up. And I'm serious about that. There's some interesting things in here, very interesting things. One is a technical question, then one's a comment, which I think you'll have, I hope you'll have an answer for. What is grinding? And I love the fact, Rob, that you talked about priorities. And the number-two priority is citywide sidewalk grinding. What is that?
So there's a company that actually the city used to help make the sidewalks safer and have less tripping hazards. When there are two sidewalks that join like this, they're not level, a company can actually, they call it precision cutting, but many people don't use that term. they call it precision cutting, but many people don't use that term, or grinding, they use tools that actually lower it. If you go on Court Street, you'll see a lot of examples of it. So, when sidewalks shift, if it's more than half an inch lip, then it no longer is accessible for many people. So, when, when the video showed that the lip at the intersection of Court and Union was like over an inch, that's really hard for a wheelchair to get up safely. So, so the grinding will allow the city to not need, so it sort of makes things safe and accessible right away. And it also allows you to not need to replace that sidewalk piece as quickly. So, it's a, it's a less expensive, short-term solution that can really make a huge impact. I didn't know, Mayor Patterson, if you had something else to say about that.
You summed it up well. It's milling is another term that's used where they're milling down that uneven surface. There are restrictions on the height of the heave though, to where the integrity of the concrete underneath it, they can only mill so much off to correct it. But we did, we hired a company that came through and did a lion's share of the uptown area to, to make it ADA accessible. It doesn't, it's not a forever fix because usually it's a tree, it's tree pits where, or trees, period, that will continue to grow and continue to heave a sidewalk if that's what is the perpetrator with that, making that uneven surface. But it works.
The second question. The video showed the intersection of Court and Union Street, which is on the east end of the fairly recently completed Union Street Improvement Project, which I've repeatedly said as a member of this council is one of the most picturesque parts of our city. And if the upcoming project can look as good, we'll be in good shape. That said, you pointed out some flaws that we have here. We're about to embark on Washington Street and State Street and Mill Street Beautification Project. How can we make sure that what you pointed out today that is missing at the intersection of Union and Court, not, yeah, Union and Court, is not missing when we complete these two other projects?
Well, we have a few recommendations that actually address some of what you're talking about. Some of it has to do with, with making sure everyone who touches the project and has some responsibility for making sure the ADA is met, is named, and that they get the training they need. So, the city of Columbus now requires their contractors to have ADA training and they offer free training once a year in the spring that anyone can go to. They also require in their contracts for there to be an ADA person named within the construction team. So, if the city has an ADA concern, they have somebody who is responsible for making sure it's done right. And our city staff also need to understand the ADA so they know what things are not accessible. So, for like the Court and Union, what we're now recommending is that they think about crosswalks not having bricks but using paved concrete that looks, that's stamped to look like brick. And that will allow us not to have the heaving, not to have the separations, and make the whole crosswalk much more accessible. So, so it's, some of it will be designing things differently, so crosswalks aren't using bricks in them. Some of it will be making sure everyone's qualified to make sure they're doing things appropriately and that we just put systems in place that reinforce that.
Thank you.
Can I just add one thing to that? So, in addition, that project you mentioned, the Uptown Streetscape Improvement Project on Washington and State Streets, the Disabilities Commission's Accessibility Committee that Diane and I both serve on, has done, we call walk and roll audits ourselves, gone out and we, some of these are virtual because they were during the pandemic. And we cataloged all the issues that we saw and came up with recommendations and pointed out the details to the city engineers and provided them with a document to help guide them, we think, to make some good decisions about how to improve the accessibility of the streetscape as it's being redesigned. So, we're hoping that they're going to take those recommendations and incorporate them and help, help advise them on the project, but we don't know for sure how well that's going to go or exactly how it's going to play out. But we have taken the time to work with the city engineers already to try and make sure that project is done well because it's really critical that it's done right.
It's a lot cheaper to get it right the first time than have to go back and redo it to bring it into compliance.
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Member McCary?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to thank this group for excellent work and comment that it is very consistent with what we see in our Athens Comprehensive Plan, has over 50 references to sidewalks, but specifically in the history, culture, artistic, and creative spirit section where we have nine goals, one of them pertains to sidewalks and improving uptown sidewalks is its heading, with particular focus on accessibility and incorporate local history during the design process as recommended in the Essence of Athens Plan. There's another section that also mentions incorporating more art onto even sidewalks. So, I guess my question is whether art came up in your discussion or if anyone can clarify what we might mean by focusing on incorporating local history during the design process when trying to improve uptown sidewalks?
Art did come up. Ultimately, we didn't make major recommendations about it just because if we'd have put every recommendation in, you'd have had 100 instead of 50. I think people would absolutely be looking for that when I ran a pop-up survey uptown. That was a lot of the feedback that we got is people mentioning beautification and adding interest to the sidewalks. I think, sorry, I don't know where I'm going now. I think that our recommendations would dovetail with that really nicely, adding more historic references to it.
Okay, thank you. Other members of council? Yes, you.
Thank you, Member Reisner. Thanks to the committee for this excellent work. Really is a very impressive report. I apologize if the answer to my question is in the report. I've looked very closely at the priority list, 37 priorities and, and most of the other areas of the report. Do you all have a recommendation for current neighborhoods that currently don't have sidewalks? Is there a, you know, an approach that you all have to let the, those, those neighborhoods have some say in that or are you interested in sidewalks being everywhere? What is the approach to non-sidewalked neighborhoods?
I think our gut is that every neighborhood should have at least one side of the street have sidewalks. We also understand each neighborhood has its own personality and the feedback within the surveys really varied as far as wanting sidewalks, not wanting sidewalks. So, one of the recommendations is that we actually have people work with sidewalks, or yeah, work with sidewalk, work with neighborhoods to figure that out. And I spoke with Rob Foell, who is the director for the MBA program at OU, and he, and asked him about, would the MBA students be interested in taking this on as a project to develop tenure plans with each neighborhood? And he said yes. So, if, if there's an interest in pursuing connection, connecting with neighborhoods, they are really interested in doing that. And they can help with things like communication, they can help with explaining around the ADA, they can help with trying to identify like which side of the street. If we do one side, which one should it be? If we, if we start out here, then where would we go? How much would it cost? So, figure out some of those kinds of things. And I, I think it would be a really exciting project for the students too. So, so we do have an idea that neighborhoods in themselves really are important and they, they do each have their own, their own feel. In the survey comments, some people said, you know, "We don't want any," and some people said, "We don't have any, but we'd like them." But a lot of them also talked about traffic calming. If they don't have them, we really want to make sure the cars don't drive so fast because we're in the middle of the road with our kids and our, and our carriages and, so, so there do need to be changes even in places where there are no sidewalks.
May I follow before she goes anywhere? Thank you. So, you answered part of one of my other questions too, which is the idea of having sidewalks on both sides of the street. It's not, the committee's recommendation that that be sort of, I mean, I saw that Madison, it was recommended for one side of the street. West State Street going past the Innovation Center, it was, it was recommended to add on the north side. So, I guess it's dependent on all the situations. I mean, that's a public park at the, you know, I understand that recommendation. Am I correct though? And it's sort of based case by case?
Initially, we, initially, every sidewalk on one side of the street, every place on one side of the street should have them. So, that's an initial. That's not, that's like meeting ADA minimums is having a sidewalk on one side of the street. But if we want to make it the, the community we want, then we probably would have sidewalks on two sides of the street.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Mary.
Member, member president, President of council.
Former councillor.
Sorry.
I did, I do, I do want to thank the committee. You've done an incredible job and I also want to acknowledge a few other people. You did at the beginning of your report, former councilmember Arian Smedley, who just crafted the resolution that created your ad hoc committee. And then also former councilmember Peter Kotzis, who you referenced in the Complete Streets Program legislation that he brought forward. And last but not least, our city planner, Paul Logue, who councilmember McCary referenced. He's been part of the vision and I can often remember him saying, "We don't want to build a city for cars. We want to build it for people." And he's quite eloquent about that and quite the champion for that, as you all have been a champion. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other members of council? If not elected officials? Mayor, you have anything to say?
Well, back to Ms. Bouvier's question of me, if I would like to say anything, I, I have to admit, the lion's share of everything that came out of this report really came from the team that you pulled together. You know, I served in kind of in a administrative capacity in talking about, you know, the ordinances, the way things work at this point in time, the work that, that Engineering and Public Works does when it comes to sidewalk projects and what we can do. But it was all of you that did all the work. So, and you did a great job. So, thank you.
Auditor, you have anything?
No.
Oh, okay.
All my information is, was in the report.
Members of the public, if you would like to make a comment about what you just heard, we can give you three minutes at the dais, at the podium. You don't have to raise your hand, just go up.
And if you would give us your name and address so that we have it for the record and also the viewing audience, that would be helpful.
Sure. My name is Natalie Whitman and I live at 38 Fairview Avenue. I was very fortunate to grow up in Athens and I left and learned a lot of different things about the world and moved back here a little over 10 years ago and have chosen this as my home as an adult. I work at Ohio University and I've made a lot of deliberate choices to have a high quality of life day to day. And one of the most impactful for me was to get rid of my driving commute. So, I planned out where I wanted to live in this city and waited till the right house came along so that I could have that walking commute and so I could also support local businesses on foot. I walked here tonight and it was lovely, but I've also had a lot of walks that were not lovely, not feeling safe. And I have fallen myself on North Lancaster, on Second Street, and on State Street in snow and poor weather and bad judgment moments. Athens is a wonderful place to live, of course, and, but it's not perfect and we can do a lot to make it better. And I think that this is one of the best opportunities for us to do that, to take a step forward and to make choices that are good for our community and will draw more people to Athens to visit, but also to live here. I'm 100% willing to support this initiative through something like a tax levy or a cost-sharing program. I think that initiatives like this that promote the livability in our city need community contributions of ideas and of time and of money because change doesn't happen magically. So, I hope the council feels the same way that I do, which is that this initiative is in the best interest of Athens' future and the future of its citizens because I think that the pedestrians really can create a lot of impact in a town. I always think about how many people come out for the Court Street events when the, the streets shut down and it's all pedestrians. And I think about how amazing that economic impact is and how more opportunities like that can influence the culture uptown and make it a more welcome place for everyone as well as, you know, helping our businesses through the slow months. So, I'm excited to see how great Athens can be in the future and I'm definitely willing to invest my taxes and my time in this project and other projects like this. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And I'm, could we get a, a microphone? Dr. Lewis, would you mind coming up to the table there and then we'd have a microphone and have it recorded? And I was neglectful, you were very prompt in your less than three minutes, but I, I set the timer here for three minutes, so it's three minutes, Dr. Lewis.
Thank you. And I just want to thank this committee and I have been one of those people who've been running around and around on the sidewalks trying to find a curb cut that I can use that's not dangerous. So, whatever you can do to make this possible for Athens, starting with Court and Union Streets and wherever else we go, just to make it right, to put the money behind it, that we can do it right for the city and for the people. I went on the bike path from behind, from Columbus Road one time with a friend, not by myself, and went all the way to Larry's Doghouse. You should have seen me trying to go here and there, no curb cut, but I think it's getting better if I'm not mistaken on that end of town. But just whatever you can do, I encourage you, just make it happen for this city and for those of us who in wheelchairs, who have carriages, who are walking, who wear high heels, get stuck in the holes and all of those kinds of things. So, thank you for taking this up, really appreciate it and look forward to something happening in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Oh, you want to make a comment?
Good evening. My name's Amy Delak. I live at 124 Morris Avenue. Full disclosure, I am married to one of the committee members. And what I really wanted to add to the conversation is how important this is from a sustainability perspective. I'm the chair of the Environment and Sustainability Commission. Councilwoman Kraus sits on that committee as well. And we have a, a plan with a number of goals for 2030, our, our Athens Sustainability Plan. And as good as we're doing on people walking to work, you said what, about 38, 39%?
34.9.
34.9%. Our goal for 2030 is to have 70% of our community routinely walking or bike riding on their daily errands and their work commutes. That's a huge, that's, that's twice the percentage. That's a huge number. I don't know if we'll make it, but one of the ways that we can try to make it is by improving this infrastructure. I also want to point out that the city recently had a greenhouse gas inventory completed. That is on the city's website, so you can all refer to it. We as a city are doing very well on greenhouse gas emissions in general, but that's a large part because of our electricity aggregation program and our renewable electricity portion. Our transportation greenhouse gas emissions, and I'd have to remind the committee that we are in a climate crisis and we need to do everything to, to mitigate that crisis. Transportation accounts for 57% of the city's greenhouse gas emissions overall and 77% of the residential sector's greenhouse gas emissions. The best way to bring that down, you know, one way is, is to have electric vehicles, but we're not going to bring that number down substantially unless a lot more people are walking and biking and feel safe and comfortable doing so. So, really hope the council and the city will take these recommendations into account that the committee has done an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Glenn Matlack. I live at 35 Morris Avenue and every day I walk to and from work, which is about a mile. So, I have a lot of experience with the sidewalks at Athens. I know what their strengths are, I know where they let you down, sometimes literally let you down. But my eyes were opened a few years ago when my elderly mother moved to Athens. She was wheelchair-bound and I spent seven years pushing her and her wheelchair around the streets of Athens. That was an eye-opening experience, okay? Stretches of street and sidewalk that looked clear and straight and easy turned out to be nothing like, okay? You have different pavement textures, you have an enormous drop-off with the curb, you have very limited opportunity to get on and off the sidewalk, there are little obstacles everywhere. Sometimes in desperation, not very often, but occasionally, I had to move her out into the lane of moving traffic just to get down. the lane of moving traffic just to get down the street. That's crazy! No one should have to do that, on foot or in a wheelchair. I get the sense that the philosophy to the maintenance of sidewalks in this town over the years has been small sections of pavement isolated from one another, scattered around the city. I would suggest that instead, we need to look at the pavement, at the sidewalk, as a connected system, flowing around the city, allowing people to get around the city conveniently. I was very pleased, therefore, to see the recommendations of the committee. I think that if even a portion of them were put into force, my mother's life would have been much easier. And as a city taxpayer, I would be very pleased to support a levy or some sort of cost-sharing program. I strongly recommend that the council and the city administration take these recommendations to heart. In the meantime, I thank the committee for their hard work over the last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Nat Flanagan, and I live at 10 Fort Street, which is adjacent to the Fort Street-Fairview Avenue stairs. Going up and down those stairs are part of my daily routine, whether it's to go do my laundry, because I live in a rental unit, to go buy groceries, to go get lunch, and when I was in school, and hopefully will be in school again, to go to class. These stairs generally are in disrepair. They are falling apart, there's large gaps in between slabs of them. They are not level on the stairs themselves, and they're hard to get around on when my legs are working just fine. On December 1st of this past year, I became very aware of how hard it could be when your legs are not working just fine, when I was struck by a car in the city of Chicago. I returned to Athens for the holiday season to rest, and moving around the city on crutches was probably one of the more difficult experiences of my life in terms of getting around. The sidewalks, not just on the stairs by my house, aren't level, they're not level all the way through Court Street and even on parts of Stimson, and it is very, very difficult to get around. Again, it was very, very difficult to get around during that time. I'm very pleased by the findings of the sidewalk committee, and I would support and campaign for a levy to fund their recommendations.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Jackson Sawway. I live at 81 Grover, and I, before moving to Athens, I lived in California in a neighborhood that actually had a fair amount of gun violence. And this is maybe a dubious comparison to make, but when I walked down my street here in Athens, pushing a stroller with my, my children in it, I actually, I literally look over my shoulder constantly to see if a car is going to come run us over, because the street is so narrow and the sidewalks are inaccessible to strollers that I, I don't know at any given moment if I'm about to be run over by a car. And I actually, this is a strange feeling I had the other night of like, wow, I feel more nervous walking around Athens than the neighborhood I used to live in where people were getting shot. And I know that's like, it's kind of an extreme example, but it's a feeling I had, of like, I actually fear walking down the street with my kids because I can't get out of the way unless I'm constantly looking over my shoulder. And it's just a bizarre feeling. I feel a little like weird even bringing it up, because gun violence is a whole thing in its own right, but I thought it was worth expressing here that like, it's, it's weird. It's like, I, I fear walking down the street, my own street. So, I support pretty much anything to help make this better, certainly on my own street and around the, around the city as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once, twice? Okay. Yes, Member Solvay.
Okay, so, I'm gonna, since I was a committee member there, so now as a city council member, I just want to say how amazing this committee was, is, because we're not quite done yet, and what amazing leadership that Diane Bouvier gave us. And we're so pleased that we had a chance to add Stephanie as a nonofficial committee member, who has now become our incredible sidewalk expert. So, it was a wonderful experience working with all of you, and thank you very much. So, let's move on and make it happen.
I think that concludes.
Do you have one other item?
I, I mean.
West Washington sidewalk?
Yes. So, we're going to keep the whole committee up here for this?
That's fine.
Okay. Next item is West Washington Sidewalk and Safety Improvements Project Number 335, Cost Increases. I suppose the administration would like to talk about that?
Yes. Requested appropriation of $70,000 to expand the sidewalk improvement project under Phase One. We had an alternate bid with the original, the original bid to expand the work onto Schaefer Street, but at the time, we had not appropriated the money to fund it. The increase of 70,000 will allow us to award the alternate bid and continue the sidewalk improvements from West Washington over onto Schaefer Street. So, that's what the increase is for. We've got a, we got a pretty good bid, it's a, it's a good price.
So, is the project being expanded?
Right. We want to proceed with awarding the alternate bid for that project.
Okay. So, the increase is not just, say, cost of materials and labor, but because the project itself is now larger, consequently, the expenses go up because of that?
Correct. So, originally, we awarded the, the base bid. We have the ability to award the alternate bid at, at any point, but we didn't fund it at the time. So, we're asking for an appropriation to proceed with the project and increase it.
Member Swank, I can tell you have a question or two?
So, when you go down Washington Street, are we going to go towards Miller's Chicken on Schaefer or towards Union Street on Schaefer?
I believe it's, it's, it's both directions coming off of, off of Washington itself.
And just on the, what would that be? The east side of Schaefer?
On the east side of the street, correct.
Mayor, do you have a comment?
I do, I do. You know, and I often think of former councilmember Arian Smedley, because the early conversations about what you just heard from the ad hoc committee on sidewalks was the condition of Schaefer. So, to add this, I think, is, is being responsible. I think it's also going to make, correct a lot of sidewalk that's in very poor condition due to the materials that it's made from.
Other questions from the members of Transportation Committee or any other committee? That's your chance. Members of the audience? Mr. Delac?
I'm Delac, live on Morris Avenue here in the city. I'd like to endorse this. I know the engineers have been talking about this possibility of fixing that sidewalk on Schaefer, which is a real problem for West Side residents. One thing to note from the report we just, we just gave you recently is that the data really shows the West Side has some of the worst sidewalks in the city. And this is one of the key areas that really needs improving to help get folks, enable folks in that neighborhood to be able to get to the grocery store, for example. That's one, I think, one of the key things, but also the hospital, medical services, city-county health department, many amenities are something they can't really get to now. You can't even cut through the, cut through the cemetery, it's fenced. So, you can't even do that. You're stuck with walking in the street, basically, in this, in the section. So, highly recommend that you fund this additional part of the project.
Thank you. Members Ziff?
Thank you, Member Reisner. Yeah, just, I love that this is something that's happening. I always get really excited. As a, as a longstanding member of the service industry, I know a huge number of the service industry folks in Athens live on the West Side, and a large percentage of them walk to work uptown. And that road in particular, that sidewalk on Schaefer is treacherous, to say the least. It's, it's less of a sidewalk and more of a, I don't know, a rolling river of brick that you can sort of delicately traverse, which is the nature of trees. But I love this happening. So, thank you for finding an alternative bid that's able to make this project happen. So, yeah, cool. Love stuff like this.
Curb your enthusiasm, please.
Never. That will never happen.
Anyone else? Okay, well, I think that's it for Transportation Committee tonight.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Reisner. We'll move on now, and we will have on the dais just the City and Safety Services Committee. That's Chair, Member McCary, Grace, Swank, and Kraul. And we'll understand if, if some of the committee members from the pedestrian ad hoc, we know you've been here for quite a long while and getting ready for the meeting, so we won't be offended if you don't stay to the end.
We won't be offended if you stay.
Thank you, President Nysli. We'll begin our City and Safety Services Committee meeting with five items on our agenda this evening. First item pertains to our water treatment plant, salt storage, roof slab, and beam replacement, Project Number 354. And this pertains to a cost increase. We need to increase the appropriation by 60,000 to the water fund for piping removal and replacement and interior concrete repair. And this will involve updating, amending an ordinance 12622 to increase the authorized expenditure in the water fund from 365,000 to 425,000. So, this is not something that we need to pursue as an emergency, but we would have it on our next council meeting agenda for that increase. Any questions or comments about this first agenda item for the water treatment plant? Yes, Councilmember Swank?
Question from Mr. Chicky. Materials and labor?
Materials and labor primarily. We are going to self-perform, we've already started self-performing a good portion of it to bring the costs down. This was discovered, so we're replacing the roof of the salt pit, and to do that, you have to remove the salt and prepare the space. And when we were doing that, we discovered an issue with one of the pipes down at the bottom of the salt pit. So, it was a discovery that we're mandated to, to replace. It's not something that we have the option to do at some other point. This would be the lowest cost point as well. We don't want to put the roof on and then take the roof off to, to get to it. This is our best chance to, to fix everything down in the pit while we have, have the opportunity.
Kind of like remodeling your home, you always find something.
You gotta find something.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Questions from any other committee members? Other council members? City administration? Audience? All right, we'll move on to our next agenda item. A storm sinkhole at 30 Curran Drive, line replacement. So, this is due to a sewer line drain that has collapsed and must be replaced, and it's created a sinkhole. So, that's obviously an issue that we need to pay some quick attention to, and it's going to be estimated at a cost of 100,000. We'll need to pull from our, let's see.
Storm.
Which storm? Actually, I'm actually going to ask for our auditors' help with which account we're going to use for this one?
Our stormwater fund.
Okay, stormwater fund. Okay, thank you. And that would be on our next council meeting agenda as well. Yes, Councilmember Grace?
Just for clarity, it's a storm sewer line, not a, like, household or municipal sewer line, it's a storm sewer.
That's good information. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Reisner?
The line that collapsed, is this one of the odor, brick balded type of lines, or?
No, no, it's not. The, the line is, is very, very deep. So, this, this storm line connects Curran and Second Street. So, imagine, get to the bottom of Second Street, and then it has to go from Curran over the hill and down further. So, it's very, very deep, and just over time, that section collapsed and probably one of the deepest parts that you can get to. So, unfortunately, you know, typically, we could, we could do that work ourselves. We're going to do a portion of the excavating, but it is so deep, we don't have the equipment or to safely get down there to remediate that issue and do it right. We're going to, while we're down there, redetail the direction slightly so that it drains out more efficiently and in a better manner.
Other questions or comments? From committee members? Other council members? Administration?
I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Reisner's question. You know, as I've been briefed, what has failed is a 21-inch line, but that 21-inch line fed into a 12-inch line that feeds into a 24-inch line. So, so the plan is to replace the whole thing with a 24-inch line, as I understand it. So, and Deputy Service Safety Director Chicky is spot on in that this is, it's deep, since it runs down that hill.
No safety first.
It's my understanding that this half of 100,000 will be just materials cost, but I wonder if we have any final questions? Yes, Councilmember Ziff?
Thank you, Councilmember Kraul. Just out of curiosity, we're talking, I'm just curious to, to know this, how, how deep? Like, I mean, I mean, like, it's not like 400 feet under the ground or anything, but...
No, my understanding is it's, it's more than 25 feet. Geez. And you have to, to think that the equipment that's coming in and out of that, that lot is, is our heavier equipment that's, you know, driving through there on a regular basis. So, it's a lot of wear and tear very deep down it over time, just, just failed.
Thank you. Any final comments or questions from the audience? All right. Our next three agenda items are proposed by Councilmember Swank, and I'll allow him to preview what's coming up with these, starting with reduction of single-use plastic bags.
And this will be a quick preview. This was, apologize, this wasn't supposed to be on tonight's agenda, but like all good council people, we got our items to, to the clerk of council and didn't get back with her quick enough to get them removed from the, from the agenda. So, by law, we do need to at least briefly touch on these, and I will go very, very quickly. I've been working with a group called Athens Rethinks Plastics for several months now about addressing the single-use plastic problem, not only in this country but in the world. And they will be coming, they've been working on this for years. I, in fact, have been working on it in conjunction with the Sierra Club and secured a grant from that organization. This will be coming before council on February 13th, which is a committee meeting. I've worked with the law director to draft a, a draft ordinance. I've also worked with the, the auditor, who has provided some valuable information the last couple of days about that. So, it is in draft form, ready to go, and will be for council before you show up that evening, the 13th, so you'll have time to review it. The Athens Plastic Group will be making a presentation that evening, and then we'll have an opportunity to discuss it. The second item, Member McCary and I met with the mayor a couple of Fridays ago, and had a very, very productive meeting and some good coffee, I must admit. Appreciate that. And one of the items was the farmer's market. Our current code reads, and I'm going to read one sentence, "The city of Athens shall set aside a portion of the East State Street Recreation Center for the express purpose of maintaining an area for persons to sell agricultural products grown by themselves." I'll be very clear, we're not doing anything to the farmer's market. What we want to do is something to code that brings code and compliance with, with what is actually happening and being sold at the market. Not only food products, but also what is sold there through the Athens Art Guild. I've contacted the, the manager of the market, they're going to help us draft that part of it. It's a very, probably one of the shortest ordinances in our book of ordinances to draft this, to make it clear, so we simply bring the code in line with what is happening at the market. Very, very simple. That's on the farmer's market. So, again, I'll say, nothing's going to happen to the farmer's market, we're just going to change the code to make it reflect what happens down there.
I think we need to pause for a question. Councilmember Spielman?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so, there, there is what they call educational booths... Yeah, so there is what they call educational booths, I guess, and so will all of that kind of thing be considered part of this?
Well, the second part of the, the, uh,
'Cause I thought that wasn't there.
The city shall charter the Farmer's Market Association as caretaker and regulator of this area.
Okay.
So the market does have its rules. And by bringing in the charter, I assume, and the Law Director's not here, Kathy. To me, it's pretty obvious, and as caretaker and regulator of this area. So they have rules that they enforce down there. But I will bring that up with the, and if you'd like, I can ask, I've seen the mayor saying maybe we should defer.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor Patterson?
Councilmember Spielman, I think, are you referencing the OSU Extension Office that does the educational table?
Well, there's that, and there's the, yeah, that's the plant, plant people, and also they've allowed political parties to provide information about candidates, as an example. And that's happened three, for free, three Saturdays before an election.
Well, I think as Councilmember Swank mentioned, you know, we're, we'll take the lead from the Farmer's Market Board, you know, they, they control and manage themselves, they control, they manage themselves. And it'll be interesting to see what they do in terms of what they feel is permissible
Well, there's the food trucks, and there's a lot of stuff happening there.
Any other questions from council members? Councilmember, oh my gosh. Yeah, I think absolutely.
Thank you, Senator.
Crowell, Councilmember Crowell?
My question is just, how much do we, and I think this is what you're talking about, how much do we need to put into the ordinance about what is allowed? And how much do we need to say the farmer's market is responsible for deciding what's allowed, right? That's what we're getting at. Thank you.
Yes.
Great point.
And we will talk about this on the 13th, at which time we can delve deeper in this, but in the interim, when I have a conversation with the manager, I'll actually bring that up. The third item, pickleball tennis court courts, possible additional funding. At this point in time, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, it's my understanding that this is going to go back to bid, which is an administrative function. And would you want to describe it, or you want me to? I mean, I can.
I can, and I think I misspoke when we met the last time. But what we will go back out to bid with is we're gonna increase the amount for that project. I believe it's, the engineer's bid will be $450,000, which is a significant increase. And then it also, you know, like any other bid in the city, what's permissible is for us to, if necessary, you know, go 10% above that, depending on the bids that come in. But, you know, it's a significant increase from what the original bid was and what was being appropriated. So this is, is doing what's right to get a good quality pickleball courts, plural, and tennis courts.
So I have to ask, yeah, will that require council action, or will the administration need to bring that to us to appropriate the additional amount?
I would imagine that it's going to require the same authorization to go out to bid, and then when the money comes in, then appropriating.
Is that something that we could do with, because what I'm getting at is here, if we don't move quickly on this, we're gonna miss the 2023 season altogether. Is that something that the administration could possibly bring to us for our first reading in February, on the 6th?
The bid opening is on February 13th.
Oh, so you, okay.
So what will happen is when we find out the actual bid amount, then that amount will be what we'll bring back to, back to council. So we have a total number.
And what was that date again?
February 13th.
So it's conceivable it could come to council on the 20th?
Yes.
6/13/20, yeah, which is our second business meeting of the month of February?
Yeah, your regular session.
Yeah, regular session, okay, great. Okay, takes care of those three things.
Yeah, we did kind of collapse them a little bit, so if anyone has questions or comments about these last three items, single-use plastic bags, farmer's market, or pickleball tennis, yes, please. Oh, sorry, didn't go to the dente dice first. Was that Councilmember Crowell again? Yes.
Thank you. I'm gonna withhold my comments about single-use plastic bags and farmer's market because today was just a teaser, right?
Right.
Wasn't supposed to be anything.
That's fine.
You found the Christmas presents before Christmas.
But it does, it does sound like pickleball and tennis courts tonight is the night that this has been officially presented at committee. So my question, and I realize we're not quite there yet, but my head is thinking about a half a million dollars is what we're talking about for pickleball and tennis courts. Are those two things separated in the, in the document? Do we know how much we're spending on pickleball and how much we're spending on tennis courts? Or are we just, are we lumping these together as one big? Because they're two separate locations, right? I'm just curious, because we've been talking about pickleball for a long time. It seems like, I think originally we were talking about 200, about $250,000. This is getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and I want to wrap my head around, you know, where, where all this money is going to.
So it's, it's one singular lump sum project. We're not going to perform one without the other. It's a package deal. With that, you know, our, our plans to bring some of that cost down from the estimate is to, is to directly buy the asphalt for the, for the project, as opposed to including that in the project price and then paying for the overhead and things like that related to the asphalt. So that's one way that we're, we're able to bring that down and not put it as part of the, the bid, but we'll get an estimate for that, that total cost for that portion.
Councilmember Crowell?
Mr. Chickie, do you mean that it's $450,000 plus the asphalt?
No, no, the projected cost includes that.
Okay.
But as a way to keep that cost lower than what it, it could conceivably be, was to pull that out of the bid, the bid portion and self-perform and purchase directly that material. We have a lot of experience purchasing asphalt, so.
And so we really don't know the split, what we're spending on pickleball, what we're spending on tennis? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Swank?
Two things, what does that mean that we will purchase the asphalt?
It means, based on the quantity needed, we contact the plant directly. We direct purchase the asphalt from the plant. The asphalt shows up and is, the labor portion is, you know, is put in and installed by the, by the contractor, but we're, we're paying for the, the cost directly to the, to the plant for the asphalt.
And I would assume in doing that, that the contractor would be a part of the approval of the asphalt, the quality of it?
The quality and the mix, yeah, there's a specification for the, for the mix.
Okay. And then the second question. When we met on whatever day that Friday that was, one of the things we kind of touched on what was location. Personally, I'm, I'm having a very difficult time with putting this in that old spot, considering, just as recently as 2018, it was four feet underwater. And in talking with court contractors, some of their comments are very pointed, colorful, you're crazy. Why? I could go on and on and on. And I'm just wondering if there aren't other places that we could investigate. And one that came up today was over there by the fire station. Because we own that land, well, since these documents are signed, we will own that land, and pickleball and tennis courts will not take up a significant amount of green space. And the fact that we paint them green, we could call it green space.
So I guess to answer that, I can take your concern back to Service Safety Director Stone. I don't have an answer for you right now for that.
Okay.
I'll ask a question, the, well, Mayor, make a comment, and then I'll ask a question.
Yeah, just to follow on with this, and I, this was part of our conversation when we spoke about other locations, you know, and yet, the question came up earlier, you know, with the bidding process, are we gonna be able to make the timeframe in order to get this built? I, I can say that if we start exploring alternative locations for this, that's going to likely scrub anything being built this year in having to look at the surface condition, the soils, the area, and so on and so forth, is, could, could significantly delay, you know, the buildout for the pickleball and tennis court.
Mayor, I would like to kind of contextualize the, this project with pickleball and tennis courts with other priorities of arts parks and recreation in general. Since I've joined council, I've primarily heard about need for increased resources for the swimming pool, and then I feel like pickleball's kind of been after that. But I know that there are many different places we could enhance our resources and our facilities, but does this cost increase change anything in terms of its priority level? Is it still your perception that, or that of the department, that this would be an appropriate use of funds based on the level of interest from the community?
I, I do. I do, to answer your question, I feel, you know, that the need for good quality pickleball and tennis court courts has been heard, and I agree. And I think that we should continue down this path, you know, to your point. I look at places like Camp Rutan on the south side of the city, significant, you know, need for repairs down there is a priority. You know, I would defer to Catherine Ann Jordan, the Director of Arts Parks and Recreation, and the Rec Advisory Board as to what any movement up and down the priorities look like moving forward, but, you know, I always say this, and it's true, we have 750 acres of recreational lands in the city of Athens. Granted, a lot of that is primitive and, and, which is great. It lends itself to our tree canopy, which is what drives down, or drives up our carbon sequestration. But, you know, at the end of the day, there's a lot of need when it comes to, to our recreational assets. We've made great strides at, at increasing better football pitches? Soccer fields? We, you know, but that's a long answer to your short question, but, you know, the, what we're talking about for the pickleball and tennis court courts, I think, is appropriate for us having something that will be high-quality and will draw people here to play pickleball and tennis in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Delik?
One more thing.
Sorry, Councilmember Swank?
To answer your question, if you'll go back to the December, it's not that exact date, save the time of looking, if you'll go back to the December 15th Parks and Recreation, Recreation Advisory Board video, it's very clear the pickleball was the number-one priority of the advisory board. You can watch it right in the video. I mean, it's right there. I mean, they, they were emphatic. That's at the top of the list.
Definitely, since that passion and enthusiasm, thank you.
Yeah. Sorry, sir.
Mr. Delik, yes. Would you mind going ahead and reintroducing yourself?
Yeah, I'm Ron Galak, live on Morris Avenue here in the city. I'm just a little confused because what, I guess I've been hearing things over the years, and now it all seems to have changed. For example, related to this project, for example, the talk was that the tennis courts were gonna be vacated, new courts built somewhere else, and that the space was gonna be used for auxiliary parking for the farmer's market? Is that idea thrown out then? And is that something that's going to communicate into the farmer's market? Has anybody looked at what the parking situation's been? We've only had the market there in the winter, though. So do we know what the capacity issues are? But you're looking at me confused, like you've never heard this before, but that's what I was hearing for years. And so we've, we've not looked at this auxiliary parking issue? It's not, it's something that's not, the city's not considering doing anymore?
Just before you?
I think I can answer your question.
Okay, Mr. Swank?
The current proposal for the pickleball and tennis courts are, the tennis courts would go right behind the Holiday Inn. The pickleball courts would go adjacent to the roller rink. In other words?
So in a different spot?
Right, nothing yet, two different spots. You have the roller rink there, you know where you can, yeah. Nothing would be going on the existing tennis courts, that would still be open. And you are absolutely right, when the discussions, the farmer's market about moving down, that that space would be used for something. At one time, they talked about maybe expand the market that way, grassy area, perhaps tables, chairs, things like that, so people would stay and commute. But this project, no, nothing is going on the old tennis courts.
Okay, that's what I, it sounded like that's what was happening. They were staying in place or something, and it's being rehabilitated. I thought your comment about trying to reuse that pavement was something you were talking about.
No, it's a pavement that exists. See, underneath that, you know where the roller rink is, right?
Yes.
Okay, underneath that is a layer of asphalt. But under that is the real, the real key thing, although it is a flooded area, and that is the old runway.
Runway, yeah. That's the last piece of the runway.
And that's been there for 70, 80 years, and it hasn't gone anywhere. And the thought was that gives us a substantial subbase on which to put courts. So that was the leading reason to put that there. Again, though, my concern is even that, I have pictures I can show you from 2018, but the water's this deep. So, yeah, nothing on the existing tennis courts.
Okay, that's interesting. So that's still open as an option for other things?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Yes, Councilmember Crowell?
Thank you, Senator McCary. Just a comment and a clarification. I'm not as close to this issue as Member Swank or obviously the city administration. I was under the impression that the pickleball courts were replacing that outdoor roller rink. They're not. Okay, that will remain, that will still be a asset of the Recreation Department, and the pickleball courts will be, also be in that area?
It may have to be a little smaller, but as a whole, it's not disappearing.
It's, it's an adjustment of the space back there. So in the, in the one corner, we have what's a gaga pit, which is kids play, it's a, it's a small area. The idea would be where that generally is, is to expand that north-south a bit, and then reconfigure the roller hockey area. Currently, we kind of slapped, I'm gonna slap it in there, because it was, you know, there's a lot of space to, to reuse that space in a more efficient manner, essentially. So we, we have the space and the ability to, to place all those things and coordinate together.
Okay, I appreciate that information, and I'll just leave with this, which is that I appreciate all the work that's been done on this. I am very hopeful that the tennis and pickleball community also appreciates the work that's been done. When the city, I, I know that the soccer community would be very pleased with a half million dollars being put into soccer facilities. So I'm just hopeful that the pickleball and tennis community, which I would love to join, is very happy with this. Thank you.
Any final questions or comments? Yes, please share your introduction again for us.
Amy Delak on Morris Avenue, once again, and Councilmember Swank, I want to, Councilmember Swank, I want to thank you for bringing up the plastic bag issue. I know it's a little bit presence under the Christmas tree, but it is another line item in our sustainability plan. It actually doesn't have any metrics associated with it, it just says we should reduce our single-use plastic bag use. And so if you're, if you're interested at all in feedback from the Environment and Sustainability Commission, or we'd be happy to probably do, you know, vote on a resolution officially in favor of this, we meet on February 1st at 6:00 PM if you'd like to drop by and share it with us.
I wish I could, I'm gonna be in Florida, but if you would like, I could contact the folks with Rethink Athens Plastics. We will have the draft ordinance by that time, and they could share that with you and bring the feedback.
Excellent, thanks.
And again, this is a citizen-driven initiative.
Great.
And, yeah.
Thank you.
February 1st, okay?
Yep.
Here?
Here, 6 o'clock. Actually, maybe on the first floor, is the first floor done yet? Conference room done?
She is not.
Okay, so here.
That's a lot of helpful information. Thank you. I believe this may conclude our meeting. If there are no final questions or comments, all right, that concludes City and Safety Services.
Thanks, Councilmember McCary. We'll move on quickly to planning and development, chaired by Councilmember Grace and joined by Councilmembers Crowell, McCary, and Spielman.
Thank you, President Nysley. We have just one item on the agenda for planning and development this evening, and that is the 2023 Professional Services Contract for Planning, Project Management, Economic Development, Advocacy, and Government-Relation Services that our city administration would like to have council's approval to enter into a contract for all of those things with Sunday Creek Horizons. And as members of council, I believe, are well aware, Sunday Creek Horizons has been working for and with the city for some time and has been very helpful. working for and with the city for some time and has been very helpful in work towards procuring funding for Armory Project. And they will work extensively on that project, especially if our Appalachian Communities' grant application is successful, because that will give us funding to work on that project. And so it would be very beneficial to have the services of Sunday Creek Horizons to continue with us in that work. But they will also collaborate with the city on a lot of other planning, project management, development, and one of their specialties is government relation services. And the, because the contract will be for an amount of greater than $50,000, we need our action to approve this. And the request is for a contract amount of $7,500 per month, which would be $90,000 for the year. Have I outlined the pertinent information?
You have. You've capped it very well. I'd also like to mention to council that the contracts that we have had, we kept extending month after month, which ultimately led to our getting $600,000 from the state capital budget, which, if you think about it, is a return on investment for every dollar invested into having them help us. It was a return of a little bit more than $14. So there's, in my opinion, a lot of value to continue to work with Sunday Creek Horizons, especially as their team continues to grow.
And am I correct that this would be sort of a, we start fresh with a new contract. It's not an extension of previous, and therefore, council would look for specifications in that contract in terms of the work details, which we know can change depending on what funding is awarded. But, yeah, some more specifics as to what we hope to gain through this partnership. Are there questions from the committee? Yes, Members Spealdness?
Well, I think you partially at least answered that, my question at the end there, and that is, what exactly do we expect from them, and how long is this going to last? Do we have sort of semi-permanent relationship with them, and where are we with the Armory? That's a lot of stuff.
Well, this particular contract would be for a term of one year, as far as I know. And I don't know the specifics of as far as what we would be expecting of them in this, because I haven't seen the draft contract yet. But I do know that they've done a lot thus far, as far as the organization of the nonprofit Blue Dot to run the, the shared workspace at the Armory, once that becomes a reality. And they do a lot of networking and dollar finding and sort of lobbying members of our state government for investing in the assets we have here in Athens. So do you, yes, Mr. Mayor, if you want to.
Councilmember asked the question about where are we at with the Armory. I would say that Sunday Creek Horizons was invaluable in us putting together a Appalachian Communities Grant, implementation grant. So through the Appalachian Communities' funding, that is the $500 million that the governor has set aside from their ARPA share for the Appalachian Counties, we were able to, through Sunday Creek Horizons, partner with the Koshokton Collaborative, which is a cowork, shared workspace project up in Koshokton, the Builders Club in Somerset, as well as two separate, a cowork shared space and a theater, the Logan Theater in Logan in Hocking County. So we likely will not hear back on that request that we, or the proposal we put forward until late March, likely. And just to share with all of council a little bit more to that, that for the 32 Appalachian Counties, there was the $50 million that is for round one implementation, there was over $350 million in requests under round one implementation. I still feel that our proposal is strong, because it shows wide diversity of locations throughout Appalachia, Ohio. But I'm a realist, so just know that it's, we'll see how it goes. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Because I don't want anybody to think, oh, yay, we've got this. No, it's going to be, I think, highly competitive, but we really made a strong case, and Sunday Creek Horizons put together an outstanding prospectus and proposal that went to the governor, or that went to GOA as well as ODOD.
And just to add on to that, in my other job, I worked for HopeWell Health Centers, and I contributed to their grant application for funding through the same. So there are many applicants and many worthwhile projects, but we just have to wait and see how, how the rubric works out. Member McCary?
Thank you. I was wondering to what extent the contract will specify specific projects that are going to be worked on by Sunday Creek Horizons in the course of that year. So for instance, will it be Armory and advocate for this and do this with our economic development plan, which I know are interrelated, but will we see some even flexibility in case projects are added or changed? So wondering what the contract will say.
Yeah, so there's three parts in my mind that we're focusing on. The first is coordination. You know, if we're successful with Appalachian Communities' grant, there's a high level of coordination that has to happen, that we need. Typically, that type of, that type of work, we self-perform a lot of that. In this case, without having our city planner available 100%, it's something that we, we just need a lot of extra help with. So that's kind of the part two, is some of the responsibilities that typically we would, we would self-perform, we're just not able to do that full capacity, so they're going to help us with that. The third part is, you know, there's a chance that we don't get all the funding that we need, which means we've got to get creative and look for additional sources for funding to get this across the finish line. And we need, we need the full strength of Sunday Creek Horizons to assist us in that, in that effort. So those are the three things that we're, we're focused on with this particular contract. And it's primarily focused on the Armory, getting the Armory project off the ground, both the building, you know, the physical structure, and then the second phase, which is the shared workspace and getting that operational.
Thank you. I did have a second question.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm just looking for a little additional context for where we tend to do these contracts with consultants. This is, the price tag is kind of reminding me of that which we have with REAL, our racial equity and leadership consultation friends who are helping us with trainings and other things on an ongoing basis. So I'm thinking with diversity initiatives, now with kind of economic development, are there other areas we have historically used consultants on a, like an annual contract basis?
You know, I, I don't know if there's an answer to your question 100%, but, you know, we have memberships with other entities, the Athens County Economic Development Council. You know, we pay $60,000 a year to the EDC for the purpose of economic development and identifying end-users for different buildings. They were instrumental in helping Athens mold a machine come back in line in the city of Athens. They've been instrumental in other endeavors. Quaidell, our diagnostic hybrids back in the day, they were certainly helpful in that venue. We, by statute, are also payers to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. By statute, meaning that half of the revenue that comes into the city for our transient guest tax or our hotel tax goes directly to them. That's by provisions within the ORC that that is done. But the return on investment, again, is, is worth, you know-
Yeah.
-paying that for, as well as the EDC. We also, since we are part of, I serve on ORCA, as the Chair of ORCA, the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, we have in the past, and it'll come forward to council in the not-too-distant future, potential continuation of membership within ORCA as well, knowing that, again, the return on investment for us to support the Bailey Trail System Network has already demonstrated significant returns on that investment in terms of people coming into the city of Athens and frequenting our restaurants, our hotels, our grocery stores, possibly our overnight stays as they experience the Baileys, and likely the Athens, our Hawk Hocking and Dina bike path, for those who don't want to mountain bike. But that, hopefully that's some, what an example to share with you.
Thank you, yes. And I was just appreciative of the comparison to consulting contracts and these memberships that we invest in for that return on investment. So thank you. I think the auditor-
Yes.
I was just going to add another example, which would be our legal firm that we use for HR consulting. We pay a retainer every year, and then if we ask them to come in for issues or to review our compensation plan, you know, we pay depending on the time and stuff for that. But we have been doing that for quite a few years with Clemens Nelson.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, auditor. And the other thing, I, to me, it's in a, we're paying a fee to, in this case, an organization that has a group of people with expertise that we could not afford to hire all these individuals and their expertise to work for the city. And it's somewhat comparable to our IT support and, you know, someone to maintain servers and equipment, and sometimes the level of expertise needed for some of this work, it makes sense to just hire a consulting firm to do that. So are there other questions from the committee? Other members of council? Yes, Member Swank?
Just to get the numbers right, I think I heard you say $350,000 at one point, but that may have been a reference to something else. So if I hear this correctly, the fee would be $7,500 a month.
Mm-hmm.
I would assume, starting when? Backtracking this to January 1?
It would be for January.
Yeah, so for the month, and we're only obligated for one year. So a couple of questions. Number one, is it typical for cities to hire lobbyists?
I don't know if it's typical. I would assume that it's definitely, or I know it's not uncommon.
Okay. And secondly, are we hoping that with the recent hire of a new executive and vice president by Sunday Creek, that that could possibly help our efforts in getting more money?
I think Sunday Creek has fantastic connections, they, from their original founders, with state government, and they are well aware of how it works. And I think that the growth of the organization will likely only make them more effective. Mr. Mayor?
I can tell you from my work with the Ohio Mayors Alliance, of which I serve on OMA, it is very typical for large cities, cities to have advocacy, you know, through whomever that they deem as the best advocate to help them with securing potential funding, whether it's through the state or the federal level, quite honestly, depending on what you're trying to, what funding you're going after.
Yes, auditor.
To add to that, our membership with the Ohio Municipal League absolutely includes lobbyists.
And we have also had city employees who are experts in their field that have gone and testified about legislation that would impact us. So it's not paying a lobbyist, but it is having a city employee who can communicate with state-level legislators regarding issues that directly impact the city. So that is another form of advocacy that we would do at the state level.
And I guess the last question I have is, three months, six months, nine months, 12 months, do we have a process in place to make sure that we got to return on our investment?
I don't know about process. I would say that we probably, as council, need to see the terms of the contract, which we'll have before we authorize entering into it. And I think that there's, there's not a guarantee with this type of work. Thus far, historically, they've been very successful, but with grant applications, you don't know. Mayor?
I, let me add to that. Council often, you know, often has, the EDC, Molly Fitzgerald will come here and give a report at the beginning of the year or at the end of the year, depending on when Molly comes, when she's collected all the data on what has been accomplished the previous year. That's something that we can certainly ask for or require of Sunday Creek Horizons as we move forward. I think that's, would be prudent of us to ask them to give us a report on what has been achieved. But I also agree with Member Grace, you know, it's, the, the type of advocacy, when you're looking for state and federal funding, it's very different, you know. We're living in a time where there is significant amounts of money flowing both within the state and from the federal level, and I've sent new information from Sunday Creek Horizons at least once a week. Are you looking at IRA? You know, are you, what, are you, are you setting yourself up in which take advantage of the Inflation Reduction Act, which is what IRA is? You know, the Armory is part of that, and looking at, okay, if we're going to put energy efficiencies slash geothermal slash solar, or whatever, with the Armory project, then it would behoove us to also look at that 30% DAC tax credit that we could get through the Inflation Reduction Act. But a lot of that would be managed by Sunday Creek Horizons. You know, you work on the paperwork to make sure this can happen. Those are the kinds of things that we look to having them help us with. You know, we've, we've been a city that's been pretty successful in getting different funding streams, and most of them being ODOT. But, no, serious, and that's a good thing. We've got a great team down at Engineering and Public Works. But when it comes to all these other new programs, it's like drinking from a fire hose every day when I'm looking at the different potential granting programs that are out there, the ones that are, it seems like there's something new that pops up every other day. Electrification is another one that's come at us. Well, we want to make sure that we have proper EV charging stations and strategically placed in the city. I know I'm going a little bit off topic, but these are all things, Councilor President Nysley, I apologize, but these are things that Sunday Creek Horizons could certainly help us with.
So to briefly sum up, I don't think that we can expect a, we can't say, Sunday Creek Horizons, you need to show us this particular dollar return on investment at this timeline. But we can certainly ask for reports of, on their activity, on their work and the progress that they make on different advocacy efforts. And there are many different avenues, and it's really beneficial to have people who specialize in keeping track of them and the requirements for each funding opportunity. Are there any other comments or questions from members of council? Yes, Member McCary?
Thank you. It's no secret that I have been passionate about our comprehensive plans since joining City Council, our Athens 2040 Plan, and I do recognize that it's this kind of planning work that helps us make progress on those things, incremental progress toward these goals that we've been talking about for the last year and a half. And I am just looking for a little comment on our intention to have this consulting organization, Sunday Creek Horizons, specifically look for opportunities to help us advance our progress for the plan.
Thank you.
So I was looking for the mayor to say, yeah, we're going to do that.
We'll, we'll add that to their list.
And we will have a copy of the contract.
Yes, yes, for our next regular session of, or at first reading. Okay. Are there now any other comments or questions? Any comments or questions from the audience? Okay. If not, then that concludes the one issue on planning and development for this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Grace. We'll move on to finance and personnel, chaired by Councilmember Crowell, joined by Councilmembers Reisner, Ziff, and Spealdness.
Thank you, President Nysley. We have a number of items on finance and personnel tonight, starting with appropriations. The first item is $1,200 to the General Fund for the Auditor's Office. This is for a- This is for a new check scanner, the auditor's office check scanner, which is used on a daily basis as deposits come in, and they can use the scanner to make those deposits. It's used quite a bit, and it has, it's not working great, I think, is the report that I received.
It has actually died since I talked to you last week.
Okay, now it's not working at all. So this is a pretty immediate need. Auditor, anything else to add about the scanner?
Just to explain, that the check scanner is where we scan our checks to be deposited directly into the bank. So now we have to fill out deposit slips and take them over to the bank, and we get a lot of checks in our office.
Certainly helps a great deal with efficiency. And as I said, these come in on a daily basis. So it's a, it's a machine that is used on, every day. Any questions from the committee on the $1,200 for the scanner? Other members of council, city administration, members of the public? Okay, thank you. We'll be on to the next appropriation. And there are two here, and I'm going to ask the auditor if she has additional information. These are both for the court, $900 to the municipal court, the general fund, and $9,000 to the DUI court. But I don't have any other information. Does the auditor?
I don't either, really, and I think I told you, I was waiting for a call back. I believe the, the $9,000 to the DUI court was entered into the budget document last year, minus a zero. It has $1,000 in there now, and they want to bump that up to $10,000. And I'm not sure about the general fund, $900 that they need, but I can certainly, we'll find out by Monday when you introduce the ordinance. I hope you do put it in there, but yeah, it's just, you know, everybody looks at their budget at the beginning of the year and finds things that they might have missed last fall.
Okay, thank you. Yes, we will get more information on the transaction class for that, those items. Any questions from the committee on these two? Other members of council, public, administration? All right, the last item on, under appropriations, is our paying our bills. We owe, we will appropriate $173,000 to the sewer debt fund. This is for our payments in 2023, both in January and July.
This one in particular, we have about 1.4 million in sewer fund debt payments. But this is the one that came to us late last year. Our first payment was in December. We didn't get the amount until later last year. We asked, and council has passed an ordinance to pay that prior year bill and appropriate that amount for that January, for that December 15th payment. But this will take care of our next payment, which is six months. We make two payments on these loans every year. So this will cover the amount needed for that next payment this year.
Thank you for that information. Any questions from the committee? Other members of council, public, administration? Okay, great. That is it for appropriations. We also have some inter-fund transfers. And I received some information about a correction today from what we see on our agenda on the third item, but we'll start with the first item. This is $80,000 to other administrative, this is for the cemetery fund. This is a fund balance increase. As I think we're aware, the cemeteries don't produce very much revenue these days. Although now it's time for, who wants to say it?
It's a debt issue.
That, or they're dying to get in, whatever. Okay, thank you. So this, so this is money necessary to transfer, transfer to the cemetery fund. Any questions from the committee about the $80,000 for the cemetery fund? Other members of council, administration, public? Okay, thank you. The next item is $160,000, which is the parking garage, from the parking garage fund. And this is, again, for paying our bills to the parking garage debt fund, so we can pay our loan payment. Questions from the committee on the loan payment for the parking garage?
This one. How much more do we have to pay on the, on the debt?
For the parking garage?
Do you know? Yeah, parking garage, what's remaining on our?
Sorry, I didn't bring much tonight, but I did bring a debt schedule, if I can find it. Well, I don't see it. I thought I had it. Oh, here it is. Sorry. Parking garage, we owe, let's see, outstanding, about a million dollars, I guess, million 30,000, it's a principal outstanding. It was about $2 million to begin with.
Right, right. We're knocking it down. Any questions about the, yes, member Swank?
Is that, is that money owed on the garage, or is that money owed on the most recent upgrade of the garage? Didn't we do some renovations and stuff?
Yeah, yeah, those were renovations, just a few years ago.
Yeah, so it's on renovations, not the original garage. Okay, okay, I was going to say.
It was 50 years ago.
Yeah, I was going to say, that was built way before I got in August.
Okay, did we float?
I'm not still paying for that.
Other questions, administration? Okay, next item, this is an item that I believe on your agenda is incorrect. This is not for the sewer fund, but the water fund. And the amount, you'll be happy to know, is not 1,426,000, but 396,000. Auditor, do I have that correct?
Yes, and I'm sorry for that last minute thing. I'm kind of glad I was reviewing this today, though. So the reason we are making these transfers is because the money, we don't have money automatically going into these debt funds, except for the sewer fund. We do, because when I first started, we were in trouble making payments for our sewer debt. So we automatically put a percentage approved by council into the sewer debt fund. For these other funds that have a debt fund, we have to move the money from the fund into the debt fund. So parking garage is one that we just did, and the water fund is the other one. So this is, as, you know, member Crowell just said, we're moving from the water fund to the water debt fund, $396,000.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee on this transfer? Other members of council, city administration, public? Okay, the last item is $5,000 from the parking garage fund to the general fund. This, I believe, is paying the general fund back for some of the garage advances that we've made. Are there any questions from the committee on this item? Yes, members of all this?
I thought we just talked about that the $160,000. What is the 5,000 for parking garage advancement?
That we, because the general fund is mostly tax dollars and considered general obligation, we can use general fund monies for almost anything, any other fund. It doesn't work that way, you know, with the funds going back to the general fund. So I'm going to say two years ago or so, we borrowed money from the general fund because it had it. We can borrow money from ourselves, save the interest, and pay it back, but we do have to have an ordinance with, with a plan. And so that's what that is. So we borrowed money for some improvements that aren't included in what we did, what we're, you know, a few years ago, and we have to pay it back.
Okay.
Yes, councilmember Grace?
Just for added clarity, we made some improvements to the parking garage and our parking meters, and then there was a pandemic that resulted in a drastic reduction of income from the parking. And so there was a lot less money than anticipated going into our parking fund. So in order to maintain the expenses that we had incurred, the city general fund loaned money to the parking fund, and now the parking fund has, has recovering and can pay some of it back. Thank you.
Thank you, member Grace. Well said. City administration, anything to add here? General public? Okay. And then the last item on finance and personnel tonight is the 2023 budget correction. This is really, just the money was incorrectly, clerical error, put in the wrong lines. And so what you see here in the transaction classes are the amounts that are needed in those, what they have currently and the amounts that they needed. You'll see that last transaction code 600 line, that is where the bulk of this money went. It's not adding any new money, it's just correcting the amounts that need to be in the, in the 200s, 300s, and the 500s, and not in the, in the 600s. So you'll see that large decrease from the 600s, and then the more sizable, and the increases into the 200s, 300s, and the 500s. So this was just caught, and we are correcting ordinance 15522, our 2023 budget. Any questions from the committee on this change? Other members of council, city administration, anything to add?
I was just going to add that this is a correction from the budget from last fall and the multiple spreadsheets that each department has. And these amounts were just put in the wrong column and need to be moved over, but now that we've passed it with these amounts, we just have to increase and decrease.
Understood. Any dad? Public? Okay, thank you, President Nicely. That is the end of finance and personnel.
We are adjourned at 9:00 PM. Thank you so much, everyone, and we will not be meeting the next Monday, because it's the fifth Monday of January. So our next meeting will be the first Monday in February.